Directions on how to submit a comment are available at pvpusd.net/feedback. And Ms. Weska, are there any public comment on non-agenda items?
There are no public comments.
Okay, so we will do the pledge of allegiance. So if everyone could stand up, he's the flag. Go, okay. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so now we need a motion of approval of the special board of education meeting for May 26, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve that?
Removed.
Is there? Okay, roll call. Ms. Crawford? Yes, Ms. Gandhi? Mr. Phillips?
Hi.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
And I don't believe, and Mr. Brock will have his abstain. Okay. So, public comment on open session agenda items. The public will be given the opportunity to address the board during each agenda item. Remarks shall be limited to three minutes per person. The board reserves the right to limit public comment beyond a total of 15 minutes per agenda item. And directions on how to submit a comment are available at www.pvpusd.net/feedback. And Ms. Weska, do we have any public comment? On our budget study session?
There's no public comment.
Okay. So now we will begin the budget studies session. And Kathy, are you leading that today? Or Brenna? Perfect, thank you.
Members of the board, Dr. Ternis in cabinet, today we'll be going over our enterprise food services, or former enterprise food services, and some assumptions that we'll be looking at for the budget moving forward. We'll go ahead and share. Oh.
May I please have host? To share?
Thank you. Sorry. We were a little far into it. Sorry about that. Okay, so today we'll get started going into it with our May revise and what those proposals will look like. Kathy Wenton, Director of Fiscal Services, will share that now.
Okay. Good afternoon. As you may imagine, there are any number of proposals that Governor Newsom has put forward as part of May revise, but I just want to highlight a few of them and the ones that I think might be most likely to have some impact for our district. The biggest change at May revise is what many people are calling the mega or super COLA of 5.07% for next year. You may remember at Governor's proposed budget that COLA was projected to be 3.98, but that has increased at this point in time, and it is made up of the COLA we did not receive for the current year, as well as the 1.7% statutory COLA for '21-'22, and then a 1% bump for what they're calling, what's supposed to help districts with ongoing fiscal pressures. So if that 5.07 COLA does end up being part of the adopted budget, that would mean a $1.2 million increase in LCF revenues over second interim. There were a few, I said a few other proposals that I think could have some impact for us. We don't have any dollar amounts at this time because there's no determination as to how much will be allocated or how those funds will be allocated. But the governor is proposing increasing funding for both the in-person instruction and expanded learning opportunities grants. And you may recall, we did receive already quite a few, quite a bit of money in those two categories. So if we're able to get additional funds, that would be very helpful. He has also proposed funding for universal TK and mental health supports. As you know, we already offer TK, so I don't know if this means if you already offer that program, you'll receive funding, or if it's only for new TK programs. But we think that could lead to some funding for us, and we're also looking forward to seeing if we'll receive anything for mental health. He is also proposing to pay down the majority of the '21-'22 deferrals, which would leave only the June '22 deferral, which would mean we receive our LCFF apportionment in July of '22. This does not have any impact on the current year deferrals, so we are still subject to those with repayment occurring in July through November. And then he is also not proposing any new funding to buy down the STIRS and PERS rates. So here, I just wanted to quickly show you what that 5.07% COLA looks like with the multi-year at second interim. That's the only change I have made to the second interim multi-year is just to add that 5.07% COLA. This does not include any of the new.
I'm sorry Kathy. Board member Phillips has a question.
I'm sorry, I wasn't sure if you were asking a question.
All right, can I ask you to go back a slide and just, and just go over the last two bullets? On, on the deferrals. So there's no change, but we're still getting paid the money. It's just that we're getting paid next budget year instead of this budget year. So we have to pay the tran interest. Can you hear me or not?
Not really, unfortunately, sorry.
So what I was saying was that on the deferrals, we're still getting paid the money. It's just that we're getting paid next year, not this year. So we have to pay the tran interest?
The, the deferrals that I'm referring to here are for June of '22, we will receive the funds, but not until July of '22. The current year deferrals, we will receive the money. We're just receiving it, we're receiving the February apportionment, I'm sorry?
So on the June 2022, it's one month of interest that we have.
Correct, as of now, they're only proposing one month.
Okay, but, and so, all right, and then on the no new funding for STIRS and PERS, but when you say no new funding, he did propose additional funding like last year, one-time payments in the January budget, right, for STIRS and PERS to hold the rates down?
They did go down slightly, however, it looks like based on current assumptions, the STIRS board will be voting to go with a 1% increase over what was proposed in the January proposal. So instead of 15.92, it's projected to be 16.92. So he's not proposing any additional funding to, to buy down that increase.
Okay, and do you know what the PERS one, because that was supposed to be like 25%?
PERS went down slightly. I believe it's down to 20, I'd have to look really quick. I have it. It is down to 26.1 in comparison to 26.3. So a small decrease.
Totally outrageous.
Yeah, just a little bit.
Okay, and then, I'm sorry, so do you want us to interrupt you, or do you want us to finish the whole thing and ask our questions at the end?
You can interrupt, I've just got to get used to looking in person now, I think. But yeah, if you've got something, I, I thought you, I just, maybe the slide hadn't moved on, I'm sorry. So yeah, just, I'll be, do better, pay more attention.
Okay, thank you.
If I may, just for a second. Eric, is there a way to turn up the volume a little bit? It's actually hard to hear over here.
So here is the second interim May revi, I'm sorry, my second interim multi-year projections updated with the May revised COLA. This does include Fund 17. And again, the only change that I've made to this, the numbers that you see here compared to second interim is to add that May revised COLA. I can wait.
So.
Okay.
Kathy?
No, it's okay, I don't, I don't want to keep talking.
Kathy? Kathy?
Sorry.
Can you?
I'm hard of hearing and this isn't helping.
Kathy, can you explain by the, we're getting close to the adopted budget. So you, you're reflecting in this projection, the same as second interim, which shows a $2.4 million deficit. What adjustments to the current year have you, what major adjustments to the current year have you not made yet? That will be reflected in the adopted budget.
I'm obviously still working on that, but there are a few things that I think will come into play. And you'll see in a, in a slide in a bit, there's a, a skip rebate that we need direction from the board as to whether or not that's going to go into the general fund or perhaps deferred maintenance or OPEB. I am going to be reducing expenditures to reflect the fact that students didn't return to campus quite as soon as we had hoped in the spring. So I, I don't want to throw a number out there, because again, I'm still working on it, but I would say that deficit will decrease significantly, I guess, would be the best way to put it. But again, some of it has to play, that A-skip rebate will come into play.
So, but what about, how are you going to reflect the current offers that are on the table in the various labor negotiations? Because.
I would not be reflecting any of those at that, this time. At whatever point we do come to an agreement, I would need to do an AB 1200 at that point and bring budget revisions forth.
And to your question, there's, there's two things, two, two points to that. The current offer is reflected, will be reflected in the amount of one-time money in the budget at the adopted budget. So for example, the current offer off schedule of one and a half percent will be reflected in the amount of money that will be shown in, not, not, not necessarily as an expenditure, right? Because as Kathy mentioned, we haven't, but the, the amount will be there and be reflected as one-time money in the adopted budget.
Because this multi-year doesn't have any of those new time.
Say adopted budget, right? We have an adopted budget for this year, right? And so the adopted budget that we're adopting in June, which is what I think you're referring to, that's really the adopted budget for next year.
Right, that budget we will account for one-time money. What you're looking at now is a multi-year projection that does not include it.
Okay, so, and what I'm trying to get to, I guess, and somehow I assume we're going to get to it prior to unaudited actials, is where we're really ending up for this current year. You know, in terms of, you know, as you mentioned, the kids didn't come back till, till later. And so there's some puts and takes, and I saw the enterprise funds, we've had significant deficits. And I thank you, by the way, for breaking out Fund 63, what used to be Fund 63 expenses. But, but also, I want to make sure that the labor pieces are in there. And then also, as you point out, the one-time money. So that's where I'm still struggling to get a handle on where we're really ending up this year.
Yeah, I think this is, today's a good first step. The next step will be on June 6th, when we, when these revisions that Kathy spoke to are put into the budget, including the one-time money, and, and, and so that'll be, it'll be, it'll get closer to what you're looking for next, at the next meeting.
Yeah, so we'll, I'll be presenting the estimated actials at the public hearing on June 8th, which will show what we're proposing to adopt next year's budget as and incorporating the changes that I will be making in the current year's budget to, as Dr. Ternis mentioned, include the one-time funds plus any other changes that I'm making.
Okay. Thank you.
And then just real quickly, one other thing I want to mention that's not included in these multi-year projections, and you'll see on a subsequent slide, is that, as, as I mentioned, the STIRS rate is going up. The PERS rate will be decreasing slightly, but unemployment is increasing significantly next year. And you'll see that on a subsequent slide.
I also wanted to take a moment and advise that our budget advisory committee members are joining us this evening. So we have Ari, Gina, and David joining us, and they will be joining in in the conversation. So as any of you have any questions or comments, feel free to just raise your hand, and we'll go ahead and answer those as we go along also. So thank you for joining this afternoon.
Thank you Brenna.
So with that, now we come to the one-time funds. So as mentioned, and we kind of just got ahead a little bit. These funds are not included in the multi-year projections, you just saw on the previous slide. We kind of wanted to capture all of these one-time funds that we have been already received and/or will be receiving. We've started to reset, receive some of the funds now, and we're going to be finishing up the applications that are due. For instance, tomorrow, we have an application that we'll be finishing that's due for June 1st for ELO. So we'll be finishing that up. But just to kind of, as a snapshot, real quick, just to review, so SRR1 and your learning loss mitigation, which you see as LLM, you see all the abbreviations there down below. If you want to know all the other things they're known as, we went and included that there. And, but those funds have already been, they're, they've been used. They've been presented to the board in our previous special meeting. We'll start to use some of the funds available to us right now with the ELO and IPI. This funding year, the rest of it, we will start to, like she said, recognize and put in the revision and the new budget that we'll be bringing forth on June 8th. You'll start to see what the impact of those things are. So also including, like for instance, the impact on a potential MOU or anything else compensation-wise that we're looking at would be incorporated in that also moving forward. So just so you know, that's some of what we're going to be looking at also later on in the regular board meeting. You'll see what the plans are for your ELO for the 6 million there. And then the reopening grant. We also have some considerations that we've brought forward of what we're going to be doing with that. And then we push the rest of the money out later into the two fiscal years because we have other things like summer learning, like summer programs, learning loss mitigation, some technology upgrades, and other things that we'll be bringing to the board for consideration. And there's also probably a lot of unknowns. So we've just kind of spread the money out over those three years. This is how it is. We will revisit this several times, probably throughout the next year, and continue to readdress it.
And Brenna, can you clarify for the board the 1.5% one-time proposal for 2021 that we, that we did make to PVFA? What, what part is that in here?
Sure, that would be, that would fall under your IPI available funds. So we got the first portion of the apportionment here in May. The second will arrive in August. So that would be where that one's going to be going here.
And IPI stands for?
In-person instruction grant.
Thank you.
Yes.
And so do you have an estimate of how much that 1.5% is? And then also how much the 375, I think that we offered to both, to both CSEA and PVFA?
So the 1.5% is about 1.5 million?
Yes.
And that would be spread out over all units? So we do have a breakdown for just PVFA, but 1.5% is 1.5 million district-wide. Kathy, do you, Kathy, do you know the, the breakdown by unit? Or are you interested in that? No, okay.
Not right now, I don't.
Okay, but we do know the second part of your answer is the, the unbudgeted cost or the total cost of the MOU? And what was that number Brenna?
For... Okay, wait, wait. We have right now 156K after second interim that is remaining because of the 300,000 that we made the adjustment for in second interim. So there's 156,000 that would go towards any of the MOU scenarios that we're looking at right now. The total cost of either of those scenarios, if you want me to.
The total cost of our proposal is the question?
That, well, it's, I'm here while I'm sharing. The total cost to us, just so you guys know, like 849,000 is kind of what we would be looking at. Anywhere spanned from 543 to 849 with specifically PVFA minus whatever I just said, 156K. It's the balance of that, that would be, that we still need to budget for the MOU.
So about.
That's not represented here.
The total cost to Mr. Phillips' question is about 850,000, of which about 150,000 is already budgeted.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
And that includes CSEA?
Yes.
So that would be the 375 for the CSEA and the 375 that we offered to PVFA?
Yes, the total cost, that's the total cost.
CSEAs for the 375 for our 647 employees is about 242,000. If, I'm assuming we did or didn't, we didn't do it with a pro rate just because we're still trying to determine what that looks like right now in negotiations. So if we were to assume 375 for 647 employees, that's what we're looking at.
But it's almost like that's, that 375 is a not-to-exceed?
Pretty much right now, yes.
Then I have a question on the, the ELO and the, the IPI and basically all this money going forward. How guaranteed is that? I mean, this, we got all this extra money this year because capital gains were higher than expected, right? But we're not necessarily going to see that again next year. So how do we know that the state's not going to come back and say, you know what? We told you, you're going to get 9 million, but we can't. Is this legally guaranteed? Or is this just kind of like, oh, this is what we want to give you?
If we have our approved plans, finish our applications and everything else, it's pretty guaranteed these funds. Depending on what calculator, one thing that I have pointed out in collective bargaining is depending on what calculator you're using or accessing, give or take a couple thousand dollars here and there. I have seen some slight, you know, variances between them. So I've just made it clear that depending on what you're using, we have been using school services for most of what we're presenting and/or putting in our budget.
So we can almost bank on this money?
If I can just say, we actually have received some of it. We've gotten official allocations for all of it now. And I was also going to point out that some of these funds, even though we might not be spending them till a subsequent fiscal year, will actually be received in the current year. So it will be carried over. So it'll be one of those cases where the money will fall out when we close the books, and then it'll be carried over to be spent in a subsequent year, so.
I mean, one of the scary things for me is that, you know, we've operated so lean for so long, and this is all of a sudden, somebody's just dumped a ton of cash into our lap, and we need to make sure that we're keeping that distinction, right? That this is not something that we can expect forever. This is something that, you know. We have to just be very careful. So if we can continue to keep it separated out, you know, when we're using one-time funds versus when we're using, you know, what we typically would have, I would appreciate that.
Absolutely. Any other questions on this? Otherwise, we'll move on. Okay, so we have several staff here this afternoon to also join in the conversation and answer any questions. I wanted, before we hit each of these slides with all of enterprise, or former enterprise or, and food services, I just kind of want to point out that this is the four-year kind of snapshot of where we were in a normal year, being 18, 19, COVID year one, 19, 20, COVID year two, 20, 21, and what we hope to kind of be what we call back to normal, 21, 22. I also want to point out for 21, 22, as we prepared these numbers, I, I would say that we're kind of somewhere neutral, not too conservative, not too liberal. When we adopted 2021, we thought we were going back to normal. As you know, a lot of the protocols staying in place kind of restricted our ability to do what was normal. And we had the cohort sizes with daycare, childcare, and everything else. So that meant that our ratio of expenses to revenues, it, it kind of, you know, was restricted because of the protocols. So a lot of that, just take into consideration, they are broadening. We don't yet know what June 15th or thereabouts looks like. So we kind of have everything tracking depending on some averages, about 85% in some cases. Kathy and I really did work with each of the teams to really look at this of where we were, you know, say, three years ago, and then these past two years to come up with what that fourth year is. If we start to track better, you definitely will see a revision at first interim once we do adopt a budget. If you do, as you look at these and you think you want to go back to what we think normal would be, that's definitely a direction we can go in also. But there was a lot behind the scenes going into this to try to say, yes, we think we can achieve this. So just letting you know as we, we, we kind of go there. So with Kids Corner.
I'm sorry, just before we start, is there a way that we can move the, the zoom box? Like maybe down below so that we can actually see the, we can't see number four. I mean, we have the charts here, but for anybody in the audience or watching at home, they can't see.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, look at that. Good job. Spoke too soon. That's perfect, thank you.
Okay. So with Kids Corner enrichment, as you know, they have done very well. We did some strategic planning and worked on their actual business plan about three and a half years ago, working with them, and again, tracking very, very well, very solid program. Moving it also to Silver Spur versus say RDM. We were able to also increase participation by moving the location kind of more centralized on the hill. So we were able to increase the enrollment and participation by moving the location a couple of years back. That will continue for at least the foreseeable future. As we hit though COVID, as you know, we had a program for employees to be able to receive discounted childcare when we returned to hybrid. With that, we ended up including 188,000 in subsidies for employee childcare for 2021. And we will be in addition. And we will be, in addition to that during revision, and you'll see it on another slide, we'll be looking to actually give another 130,000 from the IPI funds. So we're trying to, we've been tracking all of those discounts, but so that we can actually realize that from the one-time funds and it not come out of general fund, we will be making those adjustments to kind of backfill, if you will, those discounts that we provided for all of our employees that needed childcare support when returning.
Kathy, can you speak to the 2021 deficit? And based on your analysis, what you see as the prime reason for that in 2021?
It really boils down to the basically staffing, the cost of staffing in comparison to the revenues that are being brought in by the number of students that are attending. And one thing I do just want to clarify really quick is that 188,000 does include the 130. So this is the total of subsidies from the year. But really, it comes down to staff costs and a lot of that is related to the fact that, you know, PERS and everything costs more than it did last year, so.
Well, and it's also related to the fact that we couldn't have as many kids in Kids Corner.
Correct.
We were restricted. We didn't have kids on campus. So there's obvious reasons why we had a deficit this year. Kids weren't on campus, therefore they weren't in the Kids Corner program. We subsidize using one-time money to support employees' kids that needed that support. But the bottom line is, this is a deficit that is COVID-related and fortunately, it looks as though, at least in the projections, that you're projecting a balanced budget next year. Can you speak to why you believe it'll be balanced next year?
Primarily for them, they're going to be able to increase and pretty much almost return to normal based on the current protocol that's already been released. So we've already shared that with the assistant director and staff and worked with their senior account clerk to do these projections based on enrollment and what we already see. Again, not turning, returning completely back to normal because we still don't know what the comfort level is with the younger grade and what they'll be doing for camp, for instance. And then during the school year, we're hoping that it returns back to what we had before. So some of this is partially just because we don't know what to expect for summer camp revenues.
So let's stop here and see if there's any questions from the board or the BAC on this specific fund.
Mr. Phillips?
Two questions. One is that all these Fund 63 charts, are they included in the multi-year projection upfront or are these all, you know, separate in addition to the multi-year?
They're included. The 2021 numbers that you see incorporate the revisions that I'll be making on June 8th. So there are some slight differences in revenues and expenditures than what would be in the multi-year, but all of these programs are incorporated in the general fund, so they're always reflected in the multi-year at this point.
And then, actually, I was going to look at the revenue line. So at one time, there was $4 million in revenue in this program and then there was a drop with COVID, I assume, partially impacting it in 19, last year, to 2.8. And next year, you're projecting still like at that 2.8 level. What does it take to get back to that $4 million level and, you know, relatively break-even operations? Do we think that there's been a fundamental permanent change in participation? I mean, that's, is that what you're saying, that we're predicting next year that there's going to be less participation in these programs going forward?
I think knowing that we're going to be returning in person, I think we will definitely shift back to families wanting to have that before and after care. It's just, again, don't know what that's definitely going to look like based on applications. Again, this is applications in and then the assumption a certain percentage are still going to be coming in the door. Then there's just a little bit of an unknown we don't.
So I guess the question is, should we be doing more, you know, survey work or something over the summer to really get a better handle on where this is, where participation is likely to be on these programs?
Yeah, we can work with Dr. Littredello and the team and Rochelle, our assistant director, to work on that.
Thanks.
I would see, you know, maybe it starts off a little slow and then picks up speed as the year progresses and people become more comfortable. When was the last time we adjusted the fees for Kids Corner? I think we had an increase two years ago.
Yeah, I was going to say two and a half because it was shortly after we did that strategic plan my first summer here. Because we did the strategic plan in summer of 2017 and then started to implement it over that particular fiscal year. And then I think 2018 is when we, summer 2018, we introduced the new ones. But we can follow up with that and give you like a snapshot.
Not that anybody wants to have to adjust fees, but if we have smaller attendance and we still have to pay for the same staffing, something's got to give. Where, I guess the fundamental question on Kids Corner, are we looking at this to be a break-even type of proposition or is this looking to generate any sort of profit for the district?
They're definitely profit.
Okay. That's why I'm, no, that's why I'm clarifying, right? Because, you know, 84,000 is not a whole heck of a lot considering what, you know, everything else that goes into it, right? So...
Well, and this is also enrichment. So it's our after-school programs, so, which are for-profit. And so hopefully, we can improve upon those and have more kids want to take them. So there's definitely opportunity. We'd like it to be for-profit if possible.
Okay. If you just look, 2018 to 19, even without COVID, we were down, right? Our revenues, you know, it's just like, that's a lot. That was a huge, I can't imagine that we were down 1.3 million just from March to May, or were we?
And that was the year that we moved, like, summer, that was the year where we did a lot of push. Mr. Bahadur Singh did a lot of messaging. 18, 19 was a great year.
Okay.
We even decreased our food costs. There is a lot of stuff in there that we did. I love, I love summer camps. So like this, I like working with this team. It's, we've definitely seen a lot of positive outcome. It's just we got to swing it back there again.
I want to provide the service to our family and our employees and, you know, as Dr. Turner said, enrichment is so important. But let's see how we can maximize so that we can actually use that and further benefit, you know, students who aren't in Kids Corner. Okay, thank you.
Sorry, can you guys hear me? Can I ask a question? This is awkward, I'm sorry. And I'm the one making it awkward.
Go ahead, please. I'm sorry. Yeah, of course.
Or just ask me every now and then if I have a question and then I can answer if that's okay.
I apologize, yes.
No, 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 not at all. It's awkward. So in trying to figure some of this stuff out, I mean, enrichment, Kids Corner is a service to the community and we're proud of the fact, obviously, we didn't lay off our employees during COVID and all those sorts of things. So we can accept some of this deficit piece. But the enrichment program, as far along as my kids were in the district, was always exactly the same. So that's a really different service to offer than Kids Corner. And that, enrichment is something that we really need to look at. We call it enrichment, but it's, you know, after-school tennis and golf and that kind of stuff. You know, is there a different type of enrichment that our kids need that we could charge for? Or is this something we just don't even need to be in the business of running a deficit for enrichment as long as we're providing Kids Corner as a service to our families, even if it doesn't make a whole lot right away? That was, you know, way back when, that was the board's original reason for implementing Kids Corner was as a service and we can make money from it. But I'm just, I'm looking at things that continue to not make money and that are challenging to run. And enrichment is certainly something that, in my thought, we could, we should look at either not having or doing something dramatically different for if the numbers of kids aren't coming in. For one thing, you have all these elementary schools and programs at every single school. It's just hard to get that many kids into it. So I just think it's something we should maybe look at as we're going forward. And I believe that's some of the questions you wanted us to ask today, right? Is what should we look at? What should we be thinking about, you know, as we're moving forward? So that's just my thought and my kind of question is, are we, is there anything we can do differently on the enrichment piece?
And it's a great question, Board Member Reed. We met with, we, and I personally identify this as also, you know, is something in long-term, is it something that we want to be in the business of? So we met with PEF. I suggested to them, this could be an opportunity for PEF to not only potentially make money, but also grow their network of potential donors. So there are, there are other districts that do that. So we put them in contact with Los Almeos. And I know PEF went down and met with Los Almeos because their foundation runs the enrichment Kids Corner program. And so they talked to them about their model. We've since had a couple more meetings. We are definitely leaving that option open for them. They have yet to take us up on it. At last, we were notified that they'd be talking to their trustees about it, but it is potentially an option for them.
Okay, that's, that'd be interesting to explore just because it's taking COVID aside with some of these funds. I think we need to start making some, we're going to have to start making some hard decisions here, you know, across the board on some of this stuff.
Okay, let's move along.
So moving on to adult ed, same thing, four years, we're taking a look at here. I think one of the important things to look at is when you start to look at the revenues of where we sit with them in 2021. It's important to note that we actually do make a, for this particular fund, and again, this is different than the enterprises, it's tracked separately, but the district does make a $25,000 transfer from the general fund. This stems from once upon a time, years, years back, where we used to get funding from the state. I'll have Kathy probably address like where we went and we stopped getting funding from the state, but we continued to fund it. A couple years back, probably more recently, the decision was made by the board to go from funding it at 45,000 or contributing $45,000 a year after that funding ceased and it's slowly declined down to 25,000. Considering it is holding its own and they're looking to go back to making a profit, if you will, or a net profit, do you guys want to continue to fund that $25,000 from the general fund or keep that in the general fund and spend, you know, in another place? So that's probably the biggest consideration here as we're looking at adult ed, if I just kind of zero in on it, other than the obvious with the numbers sitting in front of you.
Right. I mean, they do have a, an ending balance of 173. So if the board decided to give them, you know, five years to turn a profit and basically when you're done, you're done, you know, that's kind of a, that's one way it could go. Right, so I mean, 173,000 would take care of, my math, just a little bit, under seven years, right?
Well, that would help our general fund if that was direction from the board.
I mean, I think it should just run at break-even. And so the real question in my mind is, is that $5 more a class or what is the impact in order to get this to a break-even? And who's in charge, by the way? Since Trent left, how did all these Fund 63 program responsibilities get reorganized?
It's a little bit of a group effort. Technically, Kids Corner enrichment and adult ed went to Dr. Littredello. I was involved with Trent a lot, so that's kind of how I know the history on that side of it. But Dr. Littredello has been working with the team and they are reporting to him.
And I guess that kind of comes into the question of expenditures. What are we really considering expenditures? Are we taking the hours Dr. Littredello spends and including those into our expenditures? As, but we're not?
No.
No. So I'm just like, it's not a clear delineation of what this is truly costing us. Now, I am all for education and adult ed, child ed, any kind of form of education I am for. I just want to make sure that we are not detracting from our own students to augment somebody else's education.
And right, my view on this is, is that what is our core mission is to educate our kids. And we spend a lot of time talking about these funds. They never make any money. And, you know, enrichment, adult ed, the print shop, I mean, all these things that we're talking about today, it's hard to make hard decisions. But at the same time, you know, you're looking at a numbers game here. We're transferring 25,000 in so that it has a net, right? We did that with food services a lot of years too. And it's not turning a profit. It's, is the benefit to the community that big? For Kids Corner, it is to me, but adult ed, you know, it's costing us a lot to maintain these programs. So I'd love to hear from the community. Are there, you know, hundreds and hundreds of community members who are going to be up in arms if we're contemplating not having these types of things? And if there are, that's something we should consider, but I haven't heard that to date.
So I guess what I'd like to hear from Rick, right? Is basically how many community members actually take advantage of our adult ed classes and how much we'd have to raise prices essentially in order for it to break even?
Well, on the price...
And you don't have to answer on the spot, I'm just saying.
What I do, I can report that. And as I spoke to staff to try to get a feeling of where we are, we just had classes back in person. And the first one was line dancing and it was absolutely full. So what we're hoping for obviously is that increased community participation in full classes moving forward to try and rebound from where we've been for the past year. And I'll also have to come back to the board with what it'll take in terms of a cost increase to help turn numbers around. If I may just real quick, with SCROCK, we're kind of facing the same problem, right? We're running out of money, so we have to make the really hard decisions about, you know, we cannot, you know, if we try and keep doing everything for everyone, we're going to go bankrupt, right? So we have to make those hard decisions. And I think that's the same thing here. To Linda's point, we do have to look and we do have to kind of say, look, you need to be able to do this on your own and see how that goes.
So can we get direction then from the board to no longer contribute 25K and allow them to spend down their reserve?
I'd say coupled with looking at making the program break-even, right? That's really what it should be.
I mean, my direction would be to let them draw down on their reserve without the 25,000 from the board. If they get down to a point where they're at 50,000, the board can always decide to go back in, right? So this is, but we are really looking for them to pick up and take the reins and move forward this forward.
Yeah, I would just like to see the cost adjustment that Rick is going to bring back. I'd like them to be self-sufficient, but, I mean, if it was less than 25, like, maybe if we needed to do 10,000 a year or something or even smaller, but I'm kind of with everyone else, I'd like it to be self-sufficient. But I, I don't know if I could make that call today, though, but...
The challenge here is, for me, you know, we'd have to see those numbers because if it's something that's attainable, then I think it's something that we should consider. But it's hard, you know, without that number in front of us to see what it looks like. So I think, you know, I agree, that makes the most sense, but if we could wait and kind of hear from you first.
I think that's fair enough. There's no rush to do this right this moment, or is there?
Well, just for the purpose of the adopted, building the adopted budget, it would be 25K.
Okay. Ms. Reed, what are your views on this? It seems like, Rick, you were okay with laying them into their reserves a little bit. I was too. Linda, what about you?
Matt, I kind of agreed with what you said about drawing down on it and also to your point about the amount of our cabinet staff time that's devoted to this that could be devoted to other things. Those are my two main concerns with things that aren't generating a lot of money. So I'd probably, I'd probably cut it off now and just see how it goes for the next few years. And then to your point, if it gets drawn down, then we'll see where we're at and we'll see what the community interest is and we'll see how it's, how it does, you know, over the next year.
Okay.
Maybe we just need to offer all line dancing classes and then those would all be full.
I like it.
But it's the same thing. It's the same class, I mean, those brochures used to come in the mail. It's the same thing for, you know, 15 years. And so maybe it's a time to do something a little bit different and, you know, challenge the staff that runs there to see if there's some... know, challenge the, the staff that runs there to, to see if there's something worth doing that's different, and if there's not, and there still is community interest and we're still losing money, then the board can decide, you know, at that, at that point.
Okay, thank you. So it seems like you do have direction then.
Really quick, would the, would the, you know, potential cost increase, if that's what needed to happen, I guess, to be self-sustaining, would that then start in the fall, '21, '22?
We, we would come back to the board with the analysis and decide.
So Kathy, would you like to do Vila and Mila, just like where we're at? Because I don't have as much history for them, and then we'll invite staff up if there's any questions, because I think we'll definitely need staff's help and support with this one.
Okay.
I just don't know as much on this one, so.
So I don't know if Carolyn wants to come join me. I'll share the microphone just in case. So obviously, you can see in 18, 19, the program did turn a, turn a profit. And at that point in time, we were charging indirect costs to all of our enterprise programs, which we are no longer doing. So if we had not done that at that point in time, other net operating results would have been larger than you see here on the slide. 1920, as Brenna referred to earlier, COVID year one, the, the costs exceeded revenues, mainly because employees were continuing to be paid, even though there were no children generating revenue in the last parts of the, the year. Current year, Carolyn can probably speak better to me than me about the, the current revenue projections, but expenditures, again, include staffing, which we were required to meet certain levels based on licensing. So those costs are somewhat fixed, not a lot, very few consultant costs, and not a lot of supply costs to reflect the fact that the program's not as robust, but if you want to.
And Carolyn, can you also speak to this large balance? How long have we had it? What's the history of that ongoing balance?
Well, I've been at Vila, this is my 16th year, so I'm assuming that the balance in there is just all the years where we've collected revenue. So, which is great. I mean, I don't think I've ever seen it like this, so it was kind of nice to see that. Really, this year, what's really affected us is the fact that we can't have a normal-sized class. We'll usually have about 20 students in a class, and we're down to 14. So that has definitely affected the budget as far as we're not having as much revenue come in, but we still have the same amount of staff that we're paying. And also, we're, we have to stay in the same cohort all day. So I have three rooms, three or four rooms where kids stay past 12:30, past 3 o'clock, all the way till 5:00. And I have to keep them in the same room, even if I only have two or three by the end of the day. When normally, the way the program runs is early in the morning, they're all combined together. Then at, you know, 8:30 or 9 o'clock, when their teachers come in, they go to their individual classrooms. And then, and then again, at 12:30, we start folding them into, you know, smaller groups. At this point, we're not able to do that, so that's definitely affecting the budget for this year, because, you know, normally I'd be paying maybe two people, and now I'm paying six. So, but in order to meet the family's needs for these kids that are staying full day, we had to go ahead and keep those staff there. I've definitely cut back as far as, you know, how many people I have, like I'm normally there to cover if somebody needs something. There's times where there have been only one person in a classroom versus two, which is normally not what we do. We try to have two people all the time, but trying to cut back as much as we can and stay within the guidelines. So as far as for next year, it's so hard for us to predict what they're going to say, but as far as right now, preschool is still held to six feet. So, and we're, we have to, we have to keep that six feet of social distance. So it's still equating to about maybe 14, maybe squeezing out 15 kids in the classroom. And so if that's not changed, we'll still have, you know, there'll still be some concern around that, along with if we have to stay in those same cohorts all day, we're going to be dealing with the same thing that we've dealt with this year. Though, we'll have more students coming next year than we did this year, because some families weren't comfortable coming back. We have a waitlist of about 35 kids waiting to get in, parents calling every day, Ms. Carolyn, am I off the waitlist? And we, I just can't move forward yet until the health department makes some changes.
So, so to, to that, in a typical year, you'd be able to accommodate those 35 kids, but you're basically only enrolling based on your limited capacity?
Yes, absolutely. If we were to enroll those kids, we'd be having one of our best years next year. I think at the highest height, I had 180 students, which was probably in 2016, 17. And we could be really approaching that for next year if the, if the numbers change as far as how many can be in a room. The other thing that's going on in just preschool and childcare is a lot of preschools and childcares have closed down, because they can't afford to stay open under the constraints that they're under for COVID. So families are out there looking. I mean, they're desperate for us to get them in, and I, you know, I wish I could, but we're just waiting. So hopefully, you know, I, I would like to be hopeful, but then I don't know, you know, that they may change some of that for us. You know, we've been really solvent at the preschools as far as we haven't had a lot of cases of COVID. Everybody's been healthy. It's actually helped us to implement some of our health planning that we do now. So, you know, I'm hopeful for next year. I definitely know if we can have the amount of students we're able to, that the revenues are going to go up. Another thing that happened for quite a bit of time with both Vila and Mila is we had not raised tuition. And for the last, this will be the fourth year, we're raising tuition every year now. That was definitely something that should have been done, but wasn't. And so going forward, I know Mary Ellen and I are, you know, we will be raising tuition every year, because we have to do that.
I'm sorry, when you say you're raising tuition, what percent, what, how?
We've been doing 5% right now, but there were about five years where we didn't. And so that really affected the bottom line for us. And you can see, especially probably more with Mila rather than Vila, you can see that because there was revenue lost. And I mean, you know, we can suggest what we want, but sometimes, you know, it was just decided we weren't going to raise tuition. But going forward, working in preschool for over 25 years, you have to raise tuition every year, because cost of living goes up, and all the other preschools in the area are doing that. So I really think as far as keeping both programs solvent is that we just have to stick to that and raise that tuition every year. There's always going to be parents who are concerned and not always happy, but in order to keep the program solid, we need to just keep, you know, moving forward with that.
So I know the BAC had a bunch of discussion over the years about tuition at the preschools. And I think also, Alex, you know, that we've, I think both Vila and Mila have been looked at one pot reserve-wise, and so while Vila's reserves are in good shape, Mila's reserves haven't been in good shape. But I, I guess, and we have a bunch of BAC folks here, so maybe they'll, they'll chime in. But I know that, that at one point, at least, they were advocating for some kind of tuition survey, you know, versus competitive preschools in the area. And then the other thing is that, and I don't have a young kid, so I'm not sure, but I've heard scuttlebutt that there are kind of COVID surcharges at some of the other preschools that they added to their tuition just for this past year to account for the increased costs.
So we did not add a COVID charge. What we did was we actually cut our hours a bit. We went from 11 hours down to nine and a half. So we're scheduled to stay at that nine and a half right now unless we can go back to normal, but yeah, that is a consideration. And, you know, the preschools in the area have been charging maybe an extra fee. I'm not, I don't know offhand how much that is, but a lot of them have also cut their hours and either kept their prices the same or increased their prices.
So before, before you institute or set a price for next year, can we do something around actually trying to, to get a market survey of what, you know, other preschools in the area are charging for next year? And then on the ECE rules, I got to admit, I'm not up to date on the latest changes on the K to 12 rules from DPH, but how much guidance have we gotten, you know, forward looking on what the ECE rules will look like?
So first, related to the question about competitive pricing, so we have, we already set our prices for next year, and we did increase that. I put that in a board update about two months ago with competitive pricing for preschools around. One of the questions back was, you know, why we didn't charge a COVID surcharge. You know, we just, we didn't. I took over preschool this year, and so one of the things that we talked about was increasing our tuition, just so that we can, A, stay competitive, and looking at the preschools that are around, including, we looked at other school districts and their child development centers and how much they're charging. We're right in the middle. We're not high, we're not low, we're right in the middle, which we thought was fair. So we can look again and see whether or not they've changed their tuition. One of the hard things is that some of our private preschools do not post their tuition. You have to actually go and take a tour and pretend that you're a parent in order to actually, and you have to do the whole thing in order to get the pricing. So that is one of the challenges that we do have in getting all of the competitive preschools that are around. And then the second part for the COVID protocols for early childhood, they have not been updated as quickly as K-12. And so we haven't gotten any recent guidance for them, so we can't actually change anything. And even when DPH does make a change to the protocol, we have to wait for licensing to jump on board with that. So it's almost like a two-part protocol piece that we have to wait for, but we haven't heard anything different.
They haven't updated since 4/28.
Okay. And what we're looking at here on the 21, 22, is that still assuming the 14 students per classroom, or is that back to a normal looking?
No, that's with limited capacity. So I think the, the highest I went in some rooms was 15, some are 14. So if we're able to open up more spaces, then the revenue would go up.
Okay, okay.
And then the other question coming into this on my mind was, so there is this, in the law, there's now expansion of TK down to four-year-olds, which I assume would reduce some of the enrollment in ELA and increase the enrollment. And then we'd also, when we made the decision a year ago to move RDM from Crest down to here, one of the rationales presented was to open a third ELA. So help me understand those two issues, which I know are longer-term planning than just next year.
So I'll, I'll write to the TK piece. Basically, under SB 98, next year, we have a planning year in order for us to prepare for the universal TK. And so one of the things that we were going to write to the board was we actually were looking into doing an expanded TK, meaning that when students turn five after December 2nd, or whatever the date is, you have a window where you can take kids, and they would then start generating ADA. So, you know, I worked with business, I talked to the preschool ladies here so that they knew these were things that we were talking about. And I was actually going to talk to the board about policy change, but then universal TK just came out. So we are still planning to do that expanded TK, so in order for us to help generate some revenue. And we start earning ADA for those students when they enroll, which is good. And then the following year, basically between September 2nd and March 2nd, any child who has a birthday in that window can then enroll as a four-year-old. So that will actually impact the four-year-old program at the preschools. And then the following year, basically from September until June, any student who has a birthday then turns five, they can enroll as four-year-olds. So it is going to definitely have an impact on the preschool four-year-old classes. And then not knowing whether or not kindergarten is going to be required, because that's another law that's coming out, is that everybody has to be in kindergarten before they can go in first grade. We'll, we'll definitely have an increase probably in our enrollment, but then it's going to be a decrease for the preschools.
That's a cannibalistic.
And to the, the RDM, we did have discussions with staff. I believe you did a site walk?
Yes.
Mary Ellen, can you speak to your thoughts on the process and/or?
Am I on? No. The other piece I wanted to add in there as well is the difference too with the preschools. You can have the exact same enrollment numbers, but they might have, the, the child might have a completely different schedule. So where Carolyn might have 50 students that come from 7:30 to 5:00, I might have 50 students that come from 9:00 to 12:30, therefore generating less revenue. So it's not an exact science or exact numbers across the board. I just kind of wanted to interject that, because I know my slide's next and it doesn't quite look the same. So I wanted to, and I'm paying the staff the same, so I, and I can't cut or adjust. A parent can also give 30 days' notice and adjust their schedule. So let's say with COVID-related issues or family issues, they previously were there from 7:30 to 5:00, and, or 7:00 to 6:00. But their family life has changed, and they need to reduce to 9:00 to 12:30. They can do that with 30-day notice, but I cannot reduce my staff.
Right.
So therefore, you're still, you still have the expense, but you don't have the revenue generated, so.
So tonight is a budget overview, and we are looking at these enterprise funds, and it seems like we've already set the, the cost for 21, 22. We've already set the fees?
Correct.
Yes or no? Yes, we have. So there's very little we can actually do about either Vila or Mila tonight that would have any impact whatsoever.
Correct. Unless we want to, based on protocols, add a COVID surcharge, we did set a 5% increase for next year.
So we, we could do a COVID surcharge, we could add that.
I mean, we can let the families know.
If we wanted to give the parents, it always says those fees are based on a 30-day, we can change them or whatever, with notice. So if we were to want to add that, we could do that this summer. We also, also tried to reduce costs by having the children all bring their own supplies, they bring their own individual snacks. So we attempted to cut back in places like that, but yes, we could if we gave notice to the families.
I'm sorry, Linda, I'll speak last. Linda, do you have anything on this? Rick?
No, I just, I'll go quickly. My, all my negativity about the other funds isn't, I don't have the same negativity here with Mila-Vila. I think there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of good in the community that's generated through this, including a lot of our, our students. And so I'd be curious to see, you know, the differences between the two preschools when we get to the next slide, and if there's anything we can do to support and, and add some creativity there. Do we have to, you know, if, if enrollment goes down, we're still paying the staff all day, is there a different way we can use people? Or I don't know. But I agree, Matt, that we, there's no point in having a discussion if we're not going to be making any decisions about anything, at least for next year.
So both, both Linda and I had kids that went through Vila, and both were pure kids in the Sunrise program, which we thought was a great experience for them. Recommend it for your kids if you have a kid in that age range. But, but next year, they're, at these numbers, they're, they're, they're break even at least. So, you know, I don't think we have a concern if, if something happens with, you know, what the rules require you in terms of staffing ratios that would require us to go into the red, then I think you should come back to us or just do it and implement some kind of COVID surcharge so that the, the programs operate at least at break even. But, you know, I agree with Linda that, you know, I think that this is a great service for the community.
Crawford?
Just a quick question. So you said that there was a site walk at RDM, just since that was brought up.
Yeah, Mary Ellen, can you just quickly speak to the process and what?
Sure. My apologies, because you did ask that. I just wanted to interject the other piece, so my apologies on that. Yes, Carolyn and I went and did walk the site. There would need to be some significant things that would probably need to be changed. There's very, very strict licensing regulations and rules for who can be on the campus. There can't be another program running at the same time. When Mila was initially open, there were kindergarten and first grade there, so we had to get a special addendum per se in order to have them there. So there were some significant things that would need to be done to the site. I mean, personally, I think because we have one on one side and one on the other, I'd love to see these kind of, especially when you, you know, the next slide, I guess I'm obviously Mila-driven, but I'd love to see these just keep going where they're going and be able to add more children. Could we add that third site? I think it's a beautiful site. I think it would be a great site because of the location, especially with preschool, you kind of want that privacy and that area like that. So I do think that eventually it would be a really nice site to have a preschool, but I think there would be some significant work that would have to be done to the bathrooms, some of the rooms, so we would have to do some stuff up there.
Terrific. Dr. Terrence, you'll keep us up to date on the progress with, with RDM. Yeah, I think you're absolutely right. It's real, it's wonderful. So I just want to weigh in on the surcharge. I don't think that we should do a surcharge now either, if we do end up going into the red, but this is a service to the community, and we're breaking even, and this is kind of like the worst-case scenario already. If they lighten the restrictions, we'll see the, our net increase, so I'm, I'm good without making any major changes to that. Ms. Crawford, Ms. Gandhi?
Same. I would say no surcharge at this point.
I agree with that. My daughter went to Valmonte, and she loved it there. The one question I did have, though, between the two schools, is there a difference in enrollment, like in the numbers?
Vila can have more students. We're licensed for more students. And then Vila does also have the special education students that are also included in our program. Some of those students don't pay. those students don't pay tuition, depending on their program. Some do, so it just kind of depends. So Vila is larger. We have more classrooms. We have more bathrooms, which is what licensing is always looking for, are those bathrooms. So Mila is smaller, just due to their, the size of their school. So.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's move on to Mila.
Oh, oh, whoa. Yeah, now I see.
Well, one thing I would like to point out about 1819, and I did mention it on the previous slide, is we did charge indirect to these programs. So actually, if we had not charged indirect in 1819, the deficit would have been about $10,000. So, much, much better. And we did also charge indirect last year, but that is no longer part of either the 2021 or 2122 projections. So I will say, in looking at historical data for Mila, and I know that Carolyn can speak to the more details about it, but it has been a bit on a decline. 1819 was the first year that it obviously went into a deficit. And then last year and this year were anomalies. You can see next year is getting much better. But I think some of it does have to do with the student mix that you were speaking to, but if you'd like to add.
That's what I was basically going to say, is you can have the same number of students, but you can have students with their contract being less, in which case they're paying less. And you're still paying the same staff to be there. This year, obviously, has been significant. At 3 o'clock in the afternoon, sometimes I have three students, they're in three different rooms with three different staff. I would have been able to combine those, and I would have clearly been able to cut back on that and reduced, which was something, as we started to look at some of this, I'll be honest, in the last couple of years, was looking at either finding a way to increase students, you know, or their contracts, you know, have students, more students that are there all day, or, in all honesty, look to see how I could cut some of the hours that were there. I am bound by the union and the hours that the staff have. So if they have six or eight hours, but I really only need them for four, I'll be honest, that has something that I've thought about over the last couple of years. Or kind of 1819, when we were finally raising the tuition and looking at that. I will say, Mila generally has always been a little closer to break even than Vila was, just by history, all the way from the beginning, lower numbers, smaller site. We do have the more senior staff in that sense, too, so their salaries are a little bit higher, so that we do generate a little bit more of an expense on that. Plays a factor, too.
One strategic thing that we did, though, was we changed what the options were for families this year. So Marilyn, do you want to talk about what we used to be and what we changed it to this year, just so that we can kind of ensure that we were generating more revenue?
Right. So in the past, we had two, three, or five-day schedule, especially with what happened with COVID being, needing to limit only, and it started as 12. It was increased to 14 in January, but it was 12. And we were really strict on that. There was 12 per room. But those 12 are 12 every day. So if you have a child that signs up for Tuesday, Thursday, and then you have one that signs up for five days, you had to count that two-day child, who, obviously, that tuition is significantly lower than a child who comes five days, where in the past, I could have gone up to 18, 19, or 20, matched the two-day with a three-day to create a five-day, you know, expense or fee. So anyways, that was a little bit more difficult. So going forward, we decided to do three, four, or five days, and we eliminated the two-day program altogether. I think I only had two students this year that were two days, two half-days, and it just honestly wasn't, it wasn't worth it. So, and most of them were asking for more time as they were able to have it. So we did go ahead and change that.
Can we look at the slide, the previous slide, the Vila slide? I just want to look at this as a, if we were to-
Sure.
Both together, right? So we have a $159,000 net positive in 2021, 22, and then what, was it a $40,000?
Yeah, it was $40,817 deficit.
Our early learning academies have a net positive of $110,000, if we combine them both together. I think, and, you know, board members, you can stop me, but I think that this would be something that we continue, but let's take a deeper look at this at a later time. Is that fair enough?
And I will say, I've been meeting with Carolyn and Mary Ellen every other week since I took over preschools. And so these are the conversations we're having, so that we can make some strategic decisions to ensure that they are either break even or they are generating revenue for the district, because we don't want to obviously continue to run in deficit.
I just think this is a bigger conversation than tonight.
Sure, sure, sure. Absolutely.
So we'll agendize that unless there's objection, so that you can please bring the ideas that you do have. And, because again, I think everybody agrees that this is a service to the community. We want this to continue. We're looking for RDM. But let's make sure that we're looking at this, you know, through a lens that we can optimize. And if we have to run this part as a loss, maybe we do, but that's something that we can accept. My question, last final question, is the 796 that we're showing as the ending balance was 75 this year. Where is that shown on our, so like, they're in the hole for 3/4 of a million dollars. Where does that show up?
You'll see it in the Saks forms and the adopted budget. And it also shows up at the different interims. On one of the pages, it shows the balances for every program that we track separately. So I can always tell you what page.
So our ending balance is inclusive of-
Yes.
Correct.
Just making sure that it's not like just funny money that we'll have to pay somewhere.
No, it's incorporated.
This is in our general fund.
Okay.
Okay, let's move on to Print Shop.
Thank you.
Actually, we have a BAC member with his hand up to ask a question.
Okay.
Mr. Eaton.
I just, it's not a question so much as a comment, since Linda Reed is the only member of the board who was on the board when the BAC was convened some three years ago at this point, and certainly Dr. Terns was there. This whole issue of Mila and Vila and profitability or unprofitability, growth, lack of growth, was something that the committee latched onto, literally in September of 2018, just a few months after it was convened, is something that was worth the board taking a look at. And I know it was part of the formal presentation that the two co-chairs made to the board would have been in the spring of 2019. So, and these numbers, this breakdown is far more detailed than I think anything that was presented to the BAC at any point in the past three years, although this has been a recurring conversation amongst the committee members of sort of how to get a handle on which one of these makes money, which one doesn't make money. It just, I would encourage, I would encourage you all to really take a hard look at it. We have spent, at this point now, almost three years going back and forth on it, with very little progress on our end, because ultimately, there's not a lot we can do except sort of raise our hands and say, pay attention to this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eaton. We will agendize this so that it becomes a much deeper dive. All right, next slide.
Print Shop. So I took on Print Shop this past year, and we have been making some significant strides with regards to reducing our expenses. I still have some work to do with staff on increasing our revenues. We definitely were impacted by COVID and the print that was occurring. When we renegotiated, as you know, this past year, we did renegotiate our contract with Q Docs or the Xerox products that we have, multi-function printers, and the print fleet, which consists of three machines up there in Print Shop. When we did do that, we were looking at a decrease in costs on an annual basis of $98,000. That contract went into effect November 13th, I believe it was. So, you know, we've had quite a few months now. We are tracking well with regards to those savings, and most of the predictions are pretty much on par. I think it's important to note, and one of the things that I've noticed trying to dissect this also with Kathy and staff in the Print Shop, is about 3/4 of our revenue is generated from the school sites and/or PTAs and community partners, which we offer a very significant discount to, to the point where it actually costs less for them to print with the Print Shop than it does for them to print there at their site with their machines. Again, understanding that they're high-function at the Print Shop. They get that support versus having an office manager or other staff or a teacher standing, you know, in front of one at the school site. So with all of that said, we don't charge back the time of the Print Shop employees, you know, there. And they are getting that significant discount. So if I was to increase costs for our internal customers, all I'm doing is charging the school sites. I can do that. But then we'd have to also increase their budgets to try to help pay for that, or ask our parent groups to help fund it also.
But I think the fair question would be, what would the market cost be?
That's what we're actually running now, and I will be bringing back to the board. We're actually looking at what our competitors are charging, both on large and small-volume jobs. And I have the current rates, where we're kind of looking at what that will look like for our external customers. If I was to apply that to the three-year average of what we're doing for prints and other services for our outside customers, I'm looking to see what that would look like for our revenues to where I can kind of come back to this again and hopefully-
Because I think that's important, right, that, you know, if we're, you know, if we'd be spending, you know, a lot more to go outside, then that really kind of influences what our revenues are and whether this is a break-even enterprise.
Yeah.
Do we know what percentage is private sector printing that we are doing?
As I was saying, about 25% of it is external customers.
25%, I'm sorry. I didn't hear that. 25% is private sector. And I'll let my other board members go. I'm sorry for jumping in.
Well, leveraging off that, I mean, I think the real question has always been, should we be doing more marketing to the general public about this capability? And it's great pricing and great quality, so that we could increase the volume of the private sector work, and hence subsidize the schoolwork, so to speak.
Well, I'd love to answer that one. We actually have updated our website. So we actually have examples of the different type of work product that we can do and samples of things that we offer. We also updated, you know, a description, a little bit of history of what the Print Shop is and what we're here to do for the community and for our internal and external customers. So we actually updated, and we have been working with the buyers in my office, purchasing's been helping, and also working with IT and Dr. Gattan's team. We've been starting to kind of look at some of the different websites and what we could do to better market it and explain what it is. We're not posting necessarily our rates on there, but we're having it to where they can contact us, come in, get a custom quote, and stuff like that. Again, posting the rates, we're not trying to like share with everybody what it is right now. So when we probably go to new rates, we'll post something for the first time historically.
But you got to give people the little website, right, and build the awareness. So let me suggest two things, which aren't too hard. So that's what I'll suggest. One is, why don't you try and, you know, set up a presentation at each of the Chamber of Commerce and PV, and the Railters Association and PV, and maybe that'll generate some interest. Because certainly, I know I get a lot of railter mailings, so it's a lot of print work.
That's a terrific idea.
We'll hit this.
Ms. Crawford, Ms. Gandhi, Ms. Reed?
How many, how many other districts have a Print Shop in LA area? Anyone know?
How many have them currently? I'm not sure, but I do know a couple have closed. And in nearby South Bay districts, they've been starting to post notices that they're closing theirs as part of, like, cost savings measures. So I could definitely put together, have staff put together a list of those that are still in production that are run by a school district.
Okay. I guess I just go back to my original point. What are we in the business of doing here? We're running a school district, and we're running this business that never makes money, rarely makes money, hasn't made money in a long time. This is the same conversation every year. We need to do more marketing. And I appreciate, Brenna, I appreciate all the work you're doing. I really do. I just, I just don't see the point. Are we providing, if we're going to provide a service to our schools and know we're going to run a deficit, then if the board decides they want to go with that and be purposeful about that, that's okay. And I appreciate their employees involved. But, but this is kind of, it's not great. I mean, there's a lot of money being lost here that could be put towards a use that benefits kids. And so if you're asking for a direction, my direction would be to not have a Print Shop anymore. But I'm only one person, so I'm curious what my colleagues would think about that.
Linda, to your point, you know, so if we're looking at revenues at 358 with a net loss of $52,000, so we would need for our essential rates to be, what, a good 15% higher to break even? And then does that put us outside of the competitive realm where it's cheaper to go elsewhere? And I think that's the question I need before I'm willing to make a decision on whether or not we have it. Because if this is truly a loss, that is a different discussion than if it's a service that we are providing to our staff. So Linda, I'm with you. I just would like a little bit more information on this. And then at the same time, I'm inclined to give a couple of years, right, and say, look, you've got a couple of years to turn a profit, or we're going to cut you loose.
Well, I think the timeframe might be set by the contract that we did last year.
Which is what?
So we have about a year left on it.
About a year left. So nothing, you know, Linda's absolutely right. We're in the business of educating students, and we cannot have things taken away from our students unless it's providing a benefit at the same time. That sounds circuitous, but it's- Ms. Crawford, Ms. Gandhi?
I just have a question, and maybe you guys all already know the answer to this, but is this Print Shop, is this how our schools are printing, or is this just a business?
So I guess if I go back 30 years, because we did this, yes, at one time, it was, we were printing for the schools only. And then they did expand it to be outside business also, so they actually added staff at that point. So another scenario adding to this is possibly looking at the staffing, returning to the original model that it was, say, maybe 30 years ago, to where we only printed in-house, and that could actually change what that looks like also.
So it's about 25% outside, 75% internal through PTAs or whatnot?
But a significant amount of it is internal.
You know, if we were to grow, you know, increase the cost, or increase, you know, what we charge, and then grow the, that 25%, there's a chance that we can break even. But again, I think we just, we need to let people know that, look, we got to find an answer for this. We can't just keep throwing money.
Well, and to Linda's point, we don't also want Brenna spending a lot of time on this. I mean, this, we need to focus on our students. And so if they can't be profitable and not have you spend the time you're trying to spend on making it profitable, it's not worth it.
Yeah. So that's just my recommendation, is you give them, give them a little bit of time to figure it out, and if they can't do it, then we're going to have to make that decision. Is that all right?
Sorry, just one quick question to follow up. So if the Print Shop was gone, though, the in-house printing that happens, then that's just at the, like, the printers at each of the sites are for bigger stuff than they go to an outside source?
The school sites would assume that. We would probably have to increase the size of the fleet and the machines at the sites to accommodate that going back to the sites. And anything that they need specialized, you know, services for, which pretty much is a pass-through, almost, to our schools, yes, they would have to send that to another Print Shop.
Brenna, I hope Alex has made it kind of clear. That's not where we want you focusing your time. And $52,000 is not that much for them to make up. And they just need to, they just need to get on it.
We'll work on it.
All right.
So next is community services. Definitely affected by our COVID, two years of COVID here. Otherwise, very, you know, also similar to Kids Corner, typically very, you know, profitable also. We're looking, we were a little bit, I would say, reserved with our 21, 22 outlook, again, partially because we're still looking at those that did have permits with us, fully returning with their programs. You did have some programs that just dissolved during COVID. You have some that are actually reforming as we speak, potentially under a different name. We've been in communication. Our community service person has been working with these different groups. Folks like, even Hill Athletic Alliance recently voted to do their program during the summer, so we were even on hold with that. But there, we're working with them right now. All in all, I think, again, this definitely could churn, especially when we start to probably have some of the production, where the, you know, commercials and stuff like that, we're starting to get some inquiries. So this could change. But for right now, I think they're definitely going in the right direction, and it can only get better. We did also just, I want to note, I do see our revenues increasing- revenues increasing. We are doing straight pass-through for custodial right now, given the COVID requirements. For a lot of those that have returned on permit, we would have potentially been taking a loss, given the amount of custodial support that we had to provide. So we have been passing that along to those that have permits, and they have been paying those without any issue. I don't think we've lost any permits as a result of that pass-through.
Okay. If it's okay, we can move on to food service. Mr. Brock?
Oh, no, I was just, I was just going to open up for board member discussion, if there's any question.
Yes, these are our rentals. It's pretty self-explanatory. And when, hopefully next year, we should be back to at least breaking even.
Ms. Reed?
I just, there's a question I've asked a few times of staff, is that besides at the high schools, are middle schools and elementary schools, I'd love to see how those are used. Our principals there can't see when their, when their sites are reserved. They have no idea how to do it. They've told me this repeatedly. I, I asked a board question about it. I showed it to some principals, and they, they said they're not trained on this system. Their secretaries are not trained on the system. And so I was just curious also to see how our elementary and middle schools, our sites are being used, if they can be used more going forward. That's all.
I'll try to plan a Zoom or something with staff to where I make good use of everybody's time. And we'll try to do a training to make sure that they're all unboarded onto it, and they can, they can see the calendar and have created account. We can even create accounts and then push it out and, and work on some training with them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
When's the last time we updated the comps for renting out our space?
Those are actually ongoing. Chris did it this last year. So, well, last year being kind of towards the end of our norm, our first COVID year. Last year, we really didn't do much, to be honest. And we were using our community service custodians that we also had on staff. They were actually helping out at the school sites all year long. So again, full-time employees, we were just moving elsewhere.
I guess my question is, we're renting out space.
Yeah.
And how close are we to market rate?
We're pretty neck and neck with our surrounding cities. It's just, again, some of the allure of our sites tend to have them come here, even though, you know, we're about the same. We're about the same.
So I just want to make sure that we keep updating what our, it sounds like you are.
That's why we looked at the custodial and some of the other things. So there's a massive spreadsheet I can, I can share, where we actually took into all the consideration, all those things, and revisited it. And we'll be doing it again this summer.
Okay.
Like Dr. Gattan, I've been trying to meet with staff pretty regularly to where we can just continue to work through this long list of things that we want to tackle.
And then if we can get an update on what's permissible, what's a permissible use of this space? Because they're, you know, for SCROCK, for example, we're renting it out for a church on the weekends. And that's actually legal to do, which kind of surprised me, right? But so is this something that we could look at expanding simply, right, by just making it more, making the community more aware that this is a possibility? Or is that this is something that we kind of run and go, well, it's a service, but we really don't want to increase it?
We do have groups, and during COVID, when they started to expand, like church services being able to meet, we did actually host a few things within the protocols where our campuses were used outdoors. So we definitely are doing that already. Now that they've returned to their, their location, not as much, but we're definitely open to that and can accommodate it.
All right. I don't see any questions. Thank you.
Food services. So we have Christina Lin, our Director of Food Services, joining us this evening. She will present for food services her four years, and also what we're going to be doing for the summer and ongoing.
I'm just going to quickly go over what you see on the slide, and then Christina can provide some context. There's a note at the bottom that we have needed to make a transfer in from the general fund in each of the last three fiscal years. I do want to point out that in 2021, as a first interim, we anticipated needing to make a $600,000 transfer into food services to make them break even, where we were able to reduce that to half a million at second interim, and now it is down to under 200,000. So things have gotten better over the course of the year with the participation in the, I'm probably going to get the name wrong, with the, everybody can get.
Universal free meals.
Yeah, that's it. So that has made quite a bit of difference in what things look like in the current year. And we do not project the need for a transfer in at all in the subsequent year. And so if you want to provide details.
Sure. So, so this upcoming year, 21, 22, we will continue the universal free meal program. That, that's probably helpful for clarity. So for the 21, 22 school year, we will continue the universal free meal program. The USDA did extend the program that we began running this year after Labor Day. September 8th was our first day of starting free meals. So we do anticipate higher-than-ever participation next year, especially with a higher enrollment with full-day instruction, which is why we're seeing a positive net for 21, 22. We also will look at potentially bringing back snacks and à la carte sales, depending on how participation goes for, for next year. But it certainly did bridge the gap for this current school year. During the universal free meal program, I get the question a lot, who's paying for the meals? So how that program works is we get a state and federal reimbursement at the free rate for every meal served. So in a normal school year, we get, for example, free meals would be $3.60. We would get a federal reimbursement for, for that. If it's a student who's reduced price, we would get $3.20. And if we get a student who's paid, we get 40 cents. So there is a huge gap between the free and reduced reimbursement rate from paid. And we do know in our district, the majority of students that participate in the lunch program are paying students. So by participating in this program, we are able to take advantage of a much higher reimbursement rate, which is why we were able to bridge that gap for, for this current school year, and why we anticipate a positive balance for 21, 22. And we do hope that, you know, with participation this current school year and next year, families do have an opportunity to see, to see what their students are getting, to have an opportunity to try our food, and hopefully we can keep some of those customers moving forward.
Christina, I'd just like to add, this is, this is amazing. When we met last summer, we were looking at potentially a million dollars in losses in our food service program. We had the state legislation that's, that the budget did not allow us to lay off any food service workers, yet we were looking at all the kids in remote learning to start the year. And so it was, there was a ton of obstacles this year, and we pushed out to all of our families. We had lines of families coming to our schools, picking up meals. And we've continued the momentum. And, and we've had a lot of positive feedback about the food. The participation's amazing. I was at Peninsula when they came back to school, and they were giving away, I think it was 80% participation rate at Penn when we came back to school. So the high school kids love free food, apparently. But anyway, great job for, to you and your staff on making this look like, like it does.
Thank you, Dr. Turnus. Yes, I definitely need to give a lot of recognition to the staff. When we started the school year completely remote, and we were, we were doing curbside, we didn't know what to expect. We sold maybe 13 meals district-wide. And as soon as this rolled out, as Dr. Turnus mentioned, we had lines outside of our school campuses. And our current record for meals is 7, 7,000. So we went from 13 meals, and we hit 7,000 recently. So big shout out to the food services staff for, for pivoting and rising to the occasion, and, and certainly meeting the needs of the students and the families. And, and yes, students and families seem to, to really enjoy it. Yes.
I have a question.
Sure.
Not related to the budget part, but the packaging part. So what that looks like this year and next year, if you know, will it be, I guess, individualized wrapped food items again next year, kind of like how it is now? Or do you, do you know if it'll, you know, go back to how it was, I guess, with like the traditional food serving in that way?
Well, we still have to see what developments come from the public health department as far as, as what we're able to do. It is unlikely that we will have an open salad bar that is self-serve by the students. With that said, we always provide a seasonal fruit or vegetable with the meal. So most likely, it will automatically come with the, with the tray. Will we give everything in a enclosed container? Hopefully not. Hopefully, we can transition back to, we're, we're currently using biodegradable containers, but they fill up the trash cans very quickly. I've gotten that feedback. But hopefully, we can go back to our biodegradable trays so that we have less bulk waste and, and hopefully minimize the packaging. Because yes, everything has had to be individually wrapped this year because of current protocols. So I think we will transition out of it. I don't, I don't foresee us doing completely self-serve, but, but it would, it should improve. So we should see our paper supplies costs go down as well.
Ms. Reed, Ms. Gandhi, Mr. Phillips? The projected revenues for next year, is that a zero transfer from our general fund?
Yes, zero transfer.
Yay. Great. And I just have to say, phenomenal job. I mean, the community absolutely loves what you guys did. And thank you. I mean, that's all I ever saw was thank you for, you know, thank you PvP, right? But that was thank you to you guys. So thank you so much. You guys really, really stepped up, and you knocked it out of the park. I would just recommend, though, that we have a reprieve now, right, with the government subsidizing a lot of our money, but we're still going to have to make changes. So let's use this time to really focus where we're going to be two, three years down the road, so that we don't go back to having to kick in $200,000 a year.
Agreed, agreed. This is definitely, this upcoming year is an opportunity to continue to meet the needs of the students and the families, to improve the reputation of the district's food services department, just improve engagement, and hopefully maintain those customers for the, the upcoming year. And, and hopefully, with that engagement, we'll also get feedback as to what exactly the community is looking for from the meals.
Thank you, Ms. Lynn. All right.
So just really quickly, in the interest of time, here, we're just trying to summarize some of the major changes to that multi-year that I presented a while ago, in comparison to some updates that we're going to need to be making, when you see the estimated actuals on June 8th. We obviously just talked about food services, and we've had quite a robust conversation about the former enterprise programs. One thing we do need direction from the board on is how to allocate the 1.2 million in A-Skip rebates that we received this spring. The money is currently, since it has to be deposited somewhere when the check came in, the 1 million is currently sitting in the general fund with the 200,000 in Fund 20, which would go towards OPEB. But we'd like to recommend that the 1 million actually go to Fund 14 for deferred rate maintenance. And Brenna, I have some additional information she was going to share on the next slide, so you don't have to decide on this particular slide, but we would like direction on what to do with that money. And then I did want to point out, as I mentioned earlier, unemployment is going up significantly next, next year. That will cost us $1 million more than it does in the current year. The rate is going from 0.05% to 1.23%. There is a lot of talk at the Capitol about whether there should be some relief from the state to, to help districts with this, because it's huge. I mean, it's basically eating up the entire amount of that increased COLA. So it's a big difference. And then the combined STIRS and PERS rate changes will cost us half a million next year. So.
And then bringing it, you know, kind of where we're going as we're finishing developing the budget, we have employee compensation. So as you know, we've been in meeting with the collective bargaining units and looking to see what our cost of, like we discussed earlier, the one and a half percent, what the one-time, you know, stipend, if you will, or one-time funds to all employees would look like, what that cost will be. So we're going to kind of be finalizing that. We'll put together some scenarios, but we'll incorporate some of that into the revision. And then that will partially be this year. And then we'll, during revisions in the adopted, we'll incorporate anything that we actually agree to, agree upon. For the deferred maintenance, as I guess, the history, and I probably should have had a slide here, but, to talk about it, but we barely got through with these. 300,000 was all that we carried into the current fiscal year to pay for the remaining portion of our roofing project from last summer. We now have not, we did choose earlier this year not to transfer any funds or have anything there and wait until, you know, future time to address it. So I think the thing is, is we're here now. Otherwise, I will be using probably Fund 40 to pay for roofing. There's a little bit, I mean, there's a little bit in each fund now, but this was typically where we funded it and made the transfer from general fund there. We do have the opportunity to not do that and to use those one-time funds to put it here. We also have some additional playground maintenance for surfacing and some replacement of the surfaces. We will be bringing that back to the board later. But we have only done a little bit each year for eight years. And so I'm looking at basically asking you maybe for two and a half times what we did. So we're looking at about $600,000 for some of the playground stuff that still needs to be done. Again, we can talk about over a few more years getting that done, but we will be bringing back a comprehensive report on that. I just want you to know that's on the horizon and, and going to be brought back to the board. So I think between our, you know, current estimates of what we're looking at for the roofing, taking a definite stab at addressing some of the playgrounds, not all of them, that this is where we're asking if the board would be okay with us using those one-time funds in deferred maintenance, or no. And then we'll just use other funds that we have available to us.
Okay.
On the whole slide or just deferred maintenance?
Let me go from here. Not let, maybe just.
These are decisions, so I guess we can go.
I'll leave it to you. Do you want to go through the whole slide, or you want to talk about the, the?
Well, on the deferred maintenance, I do have an item. So, so, which has been a consistent item throughout COVID, which is, what about, you know, doing some, some real upgrades to the HVAC AC systems at the sites, most in need of them? Because I mean, I keep hearing that certain sites just don't have good ventilation. And I know that we have replaced MERV filters at various sites, and we've added standalone air purifiers. But certainly, there was a significant component of the bond that failed that had to do with upgrading the ACs, for example, across the elementary school. So, so what could we do, you know, in, that would help with the whole ventilation system for, for COVID as well?
Actually, Mr. Fahey, I know you were doing some early pricing on that. I mean, do you feel comfortable giving some estimates for it?
We have failed.
On up, Ms. Reed.
I haven't put together any numbers at individual sites as far as replacement cost. There's significant older units that, right now, are, are just maintaining what we have with outside air. We are, the ventilation systems are, are functioning and operating, but I don't have numbers as far as replacements at individual sites.
Can we actually look at which ones need to, you know, essentially increase the flow rates? Because I think that that's one of the, the big things that people have recommended, is to, you know, have increased the, the flow through the systems. And my understanding is, you know, some of our systems weren't up to, to just enough.
So like, taking, for example, like, we discussed Merica Catalina.
Right.
So like, what would a replacement unit that would be more efficient and, and doing what Mr. Phillips says, what would that kind of, because we had some estimates, but I know we were trying to go out and get more detailed info.
With the new systems, I mean, it would probably, we would be over $1 million probably from Merica Catalina to do all locations. I would say one to 1.5.
So we will, we'll do some.
Yeah.
I can pull together. I'll, I'll take down and research rather than just try to, off the top of my head with these systems, but we had.
Well.
Yes.
Again, just note, we would be looking at this for the sites that already have it. Some of the sites, we would have to be looking at electrical upgrades to then be able to accommodate even installing it if they don't already currently have it.
We do have one-time money.
There's like 2 million just for the, for the Ridgecrest.
So what, what? So we'll, we'll bring, we'll bring this back and we can.
For the air conditioning side, it's really, Ridgecrest is the only thing that has been prepared electrically to have a, a full HVAC upgrade. Otherwise, you know, electrically, our electrician doesn't feel that it would be, there's a significant system there to really do much upgrades.
Well, yeah, but we've also, we also have a lot of one-time money that's supposed to be used for, to address COVID-type issues. And this is a COVID-type issue. So my question really is, you know, what, what, what is an appropriate usage of that? And I, and I don't know, you know, what's the most effective things that we can do with that? But that certainly would be something I think we consider.
Put like the million into deferred maintenance and then augmented that with one-time money, we might be able to get a lot more done.
At least a few sites that they're most in need. And I know, I know we have this tendency to try and want everyone to be up to a certain, you know, level.
Which is the triage.
Yeah, right. Let's figure out what's, what's most in need and address those at least.
Okay. Adult Ed, look, you guys read my mind and have it all in the slide. You read the board's mind. Good job.
Well, we probably should have a question mark there, but.
Pay as you go.
And then for OPEB, we will be coming back with members of the Budget Advisory Committee to make a presentation to the board on June 8th. They will be sharing what those different scenarios and as they're calling it, the different levers, levers of different things that the board will have to decide in a couple of different scenarios. So again, I, I don't want to steal it from them, but they're, they're going to be addressing you and they will be presenting it. For right now though, for budget preparation, we will be going with the pay as you go, the way that we currently budget. And then if there is direction to go in another, another way, we might be looking at a trust. Like from where we are now, we might be looking at a trust and some other things. So that will definitely include, you know, interviews and some other presentations if, if we go in that direction and that's where the board goes. But I just want you to know that's what we will be budgeting going forward. There's not really a decision there other than the fact we'll be here June 8th.
Pay as you go until told otherwise.
Yeah, we'll be here June 8th with that. Staffing, we have been looking at master schedules. Dr. Katana has met with each of the high schools for that.
Not yet. I have one tomorrow.
Oh, one. Okay, we did one.
And then the intermediates as well.
All right. So we're looking at those master schedules just to make sure that we are trying to reduce them, what that number will be, you know, we're still working on it. But I just want you guys to know that we are definitely looking at that as a, as a budget item moving forward also. We probably won't have a firm number here until June, so that will be one of the last pivots we make for the adopted budget for that specific line item.
So, you know, the point two assignment, I think Linda and I see this ever since we've been on the board every year, something to be addressed. But, but it seems like next year, when we're trying to, you know, address learning loss and actually provide more opportunities for instruction with kids, to me, it seems like honestly not the time to try and reduce point twos and actually potentially expand the use of point twos, as long as it's directed at, you know, mitigating learning loss. And, you know, and we do have funds for that and the one-time money as well.
We will look at that. The, the other piece of the puzzle that may not necessarily mean we need to expand, but maybe not significantly reduce, is that our enrollment is down. And so even these, the, the current projections here are ambitious based on the number of kids we lost this year. So the 10, 800 projected for 2122, we may not hit that number. And so while we're flat funded for next year for enrollment, it's how we build our budget and what we put into the budget for 2223 as far as enrollment will determine what our projected revenues are from the state. So that number is a, is an important number for us to consider.
But as you point out, it's really the following year, right? 2223 and.
Right. But, right.
But so in, in the impact, if we're off, because we're, we're basically, our staff is, is flat too, right? So our, our class size ratios would go down, I would think, next year.
Yes, yeah. So our ratio should go down next year based on less kids. And our multi-year budget will also have to be revised down on the revenue side for 2223.
Right. And the state will, we still, I think there's still some lack of clarity exactly how the state's going to handle 2223 because we're not the only public school district that's facing kind of this issue with, with, you know, COVID impact on enrollment.
And we're actually in the, in a better place than most. I think Hermosa was down like 12%. Yeah, so we're, this looks like about 2%, 3% for what we're looking at, 2122. Are we seeing that a lot in the kindergarten where parents held their students back? And now we're seeing a, a large increase in kindergarten? Or is kindergarten about on par with previous years?
Say that again?
So are, are we seeing an increased number of kindergarten students or is it on?
It's about the same, actually a little bit less, but we're not done with our enrollment yet, so.
Well, that was just one of the concerns that was brought up or, you know, explanations was that kindergartners, parents would just hold their kids out for that year and then just send them the next. So I was actually anticipating to see more kindergarten students come in, but that doesn't seem to be the case.
Not at this time. I mean, we are still doing enrollment, so we just opened our enrollment window in February. So we're still looking at our enrollment, but we are still down at our elementary schools.
But, you know, the same thing, you know, that we mentioned with food services, you know, we have a reprieve this year, but we have a, a cliff in 2223 that we cannot ignore.
So, so I don't think we, you know, because it hasn't affected our funding, we haven't really gotten those grade by grade enrollment reports in quite a while. So if you could send, update us on that along with the, you know, how projections are running for next year, that, that would be useful.
Expect it Friday.
Ms. Reed, I forgot to look down there. Do you have anything? Okay, sorry. Thank you. It's getting dark over there. The, the last one was other. What's the other?
If there's anything else you wanted us to look at as we prepare the budget, we tried to think of everything, but there might be something else. I don't know. If there's anything that you want us to look at as we.
4:55, we have a meeting that coming right up. I want to thank, unless the board members have any questions, final questions. Thank you all for being here tonight, for taking your time to, to be here with us and, and answer the questions. We, we value the work that all of you do and it's, it's, we, we appreciate it. I feel like I said it all the time, right? Thank you, thank you, thank you. We appreciate, but it's true. I, I don't know what else to say. You know, guys are amazing. You're wonderful and thank you for all you do. With that, Ms. Crawford? Oh, look at this. Thank you. There be no further business in front of the board. I adjourn this meeting at 4:55 PM. Thank you.